It's called order. Start with the roll call, please. Nancy Kupka?
Here.
Julia Beckman?
Here.
Deb Boyle?
Here.
Mike Davenport?
I am here.
Keith Mattoon?
Here.
Terry Pavasich?
Here.
And McPavinato?
Here.
This means a pledge of allegiance?
Get to work.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do we have to identify?
No.
No.
We're open.
With student perspectives?
Thank you, Dr. Kupka. Tonight, we're going to hear from students from North High. Mr. Kasek, would you please introduce your group?
Thank you, Dr. McDonald. This past weekend, 100 North students were up at Holiday Home Camp in Williams Bay, Wisconsin for an Elite Leadership Weekend Training Program. I had the opportunity to spend a little time up there and it was really terrific to see the students engaged in so many leadership building, problem-solving type activities. It was really a very, very positive weekend. Hopefully, you've had a chance to see some of the pictures up there. The Elite Leadership Group is Everyday Leadership Inspired Through Example. And we have four senior models of that that have come up and talked a little bit about leadership programs at North and the weekend retreat.
Hi, I'm Angela. I'm a senior. And some things I was involved in other than Elite were snowball and orchestra.
Hi, I'm Hannah. I'm a senior. And some things I was involved with before Elite were cross-country, track, and snowball.
Hi, I'm Madeline. I'm a senior. Before I was involved as being a leader for Elite, I'm a member of the Thespian Society, part of the Drama Board, and also part of the Scholastic Bowl team.
Hi, Megan. I'm a senior. I'm sorry my voice is going, but before I was a leader for Elite, I was involved with snowball and student council.
So, we started planning this weekend back in last May, and we had meetings throughout the summer to sort of plan out, you know, what we wanted to do, what our goals were, you know, what kind of kids we were looking for, and what sort of things we wanted to help build and establish in them. And it was all leading up to this past Saturday morning when we arrived at the gym, like, you know, 6:45, 7 o'clock, and we got everyone there and started to get all pumped up. Students, we broke up in eight different color groups. And from then on, we started, like, sort of building our own little family around our groups. We had, like, maybe 12 to 13 kids in each group. And we left North, got on the bus, and next thing we know, we're in Wisconsin, where we are suddenly thrown altogether and given a group goal. And our first goal was, you know, we want to tag this person with this giant inflatable ball. And it was a lot of teamwork and a lot of hard work because you have to coordinate, you know, how exactly we're going to do this. And so from there, we broke back up into our small groups, and we continued to get to know each other with our first sessions where we had a group challenge for all of us. Each group had a different sort of challenge that we had to take on together. And it was the start of getting to know ourselves as a leader, but also starting to learn how to work with other people who also have really amazing leadership qualities. So, from then on, we had lunch, and then we got back out on the course with the staff of the OWLS program who we were working with. And we started doing low ropes courses. So, I don't know if any of you have ever done that, but activities like spider web, where you're lifting people up and putting them through holes that are, like, you know, five feet off the ground to get them to the other side of this without touching a net. Or they have a 12-foot wall there, where your goal is to get these kids from this side of the wall to the top of it, which is a lot more hard than you might think because so many people can only lift so many people, and you have to push up and pull, and you have to be safe, too. So, you have to learn how to trust your team that you've been told to work with. So, after that first incredibly full day, we went back and we had small group sessions where we were able to talk about all the different sort of things that we had learned that day, different things we'd learned about ourselves and our friends, and also what we wanted to possibly change or affect, and these positive changes that we wanted to make in our own school. Because one of the goals of Elite is to continue throughout the year with meeting up and affecting the way things work or the way people think at North to make the environment overall much more positive. So, after that, we went to bed and got started bright and early, 6:00 AM for some of us, on Sunday morning with a giant game of, like, handball, which is like soccer, but you're throwing the ball. So, out in a large field, seniors beat the teachers. The teachers will tell you differently.[339.16][339.16](laughter) But we definitely won. And got back, had breakfast, and we're right away back out on the course again. And it was a really amazing change to see the way we had worked together differently from yesterday, or from Saturday to Sunday, because after a full day of team building, you get to trust these people that you're working with and to know them so much more. So, it's really an amazing transformation to see.
So, throughout the course of the year, we're going to continue meeting with these groups, and we're going to have kind of separate subgroups within the big, large group of us to kind of tackle different things that we talked about at the weekend, about things that we want to do to, as Madeline said, kind of improve the environment of our school. And so, when we were presenting all of our ideas that we came together with our group, Ms. Borman over there and Mr. Maradola and Ms. Hurley did a good job of listening to what we had to say, and they're working really hard to give us our footing for how we can go about doing that change. Because we couldn't have even gone and done any of the things that we did this weekend without all three of them, so.
It was really cool during our small group sessions, we talked about what we liked about North, which was a lot of stuff, and the things that we also liked to change. And it was really cool because we had our small groups talk about that, and then we got all back together with the whole Elite group and, like, shared, we had three people from each group share what we'd like to change and work on. So, we're going to, like, have meetings afterwards and try to get that done. But it was just really great as a senior seeing that there's all these, like, underclassmen who are going to be really great leaders, and once we're gone, just keep the ball rolling with, like, great leadership and stuff. And again, it was just really a great weekend. I was really grateful to be a part of it.
It was just to see the transformation from when we first met on Saturday morning to then as we were leaving on Sunday, to see how much stronger we had grown and how much the leadership skills we had gained through this weekend, and just to see how many of these, like, younger students who went also, like, they're now excited and ready to be involved in North and take on these leadership roles.
Any questions?
Well, I have two. Anybody else want to go?
Go ahead.
I always have questions. First of all, congratulations, because it sounds like it was a really great success. And what I've heard through the grapevine from some friends of my kids at North was that it was a really great success. So, my first question is, plus your presentation was wonderful. What do you think really honed your leadership skills more? The activities of the weekend or preparing for the weekend and doing the work afterwards?
Well, I think a lot of us already had some really well-developed leadership skills, but the weekend obviously helped a lot, just because the whole focus of it was to work on team building and seeing what kind of a leader you were and how you could lead a group. And so, I think planning showed that a little bit, but I think more throughout the weekend was able to show us what kind of leaders we were, just because as the weekend went on, our skills developed and came out when we were working with other leaders, because we worked with two other people. And so, having different types of leaders around you kind of helps to demonstrate your strengths and weaknesses.
Thank you.
Just to add on that, what I really liked about with the activities was we'd do something like rock climbing that you wouldn't do at school normally, but our leader from OWLS, the program, the guy who worked there, he would tell us, "How could you bring this back to school? Like, how would you take something like this and, like, bring it back to school and relate it to a situation that you'd have in your school?" So, it was really great to, like, go from there and bring it back to school, because a lot of our focus was about how are we going to improve our school community?
My second question was, you all spoke about the fact that you identified things you wanted to see change. So, from your perspective, and realizing you're not speaking, you're speaking from your perspective and not necessarily for the group you're heading up, what's the number-one thing you'd like to see changed? Not to put you on the spot, but, you know, I'm gonna.
A lot of it just related to general positivity and willingness at North to sort of step up and, you know, put yourself out there, because you'll have so much more fun and to make people happier, I think is just a big part of it, because being happy is more fun than being unhappy, especially in high school where there's a lot going on, so.
I think one of our most major things was, like Madeline said, just for all of us to be more positive as a school, a lot of the focus was put on paying a lot of attention to things other than varsity football and basketball and just, like, the things that everybody knows about, but just kind of, you know, like, somebody brought up when we were at the weekend, that morning that we left, and we thought we had to get up so early, the band left for something at 3:30 in the morning, and all of us in that room didn't even know that. So, I think it's important for us as a school to work harder to kind of be aware of everybody else's activities rather than just, you know, varsity football and not, you know, like, a lot of us don't even pay attention to the freshman football or the JV or the sophomore football team, so.
Anybody else want to answer? You don't have to. Any other questions or comments? Well, I'd like to thank you for your presentation was outstanding, and thank you for being leaders in your community. And you are all going to go far. We can tell that now.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to you tonight.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, well, tough as that will be to follow, I see you've contributed. From ASBO?
I believe officials from the Illinois Association of School Business Officials are here tonight to make a presentation to the board and district on behalf of past president and District 99 Controller Mark Stalen.
Thank you. My name is Mike Jacoby. I'm the executive director of the association, and it's a privilege to be able to share a few minutes with you tonight, and thank you for giving us this time. We really enjoy coming to a district after someone has finished their role of leadership with the association. As our students were kind of explaining the, you know, the definition of elite, I think Mark is really an elite leader with us, you know, somebody that inspires not only other leaders in the association, but also has left a great legacy by his own example. So, we're here tonight for two reasons, really to honor Mark, but then also to thank you, because we also know that when a leader commits to leading a statewide organization, in Mark's case, that was a seven-year stint of leadership, of commitment to the profession over time, culminating in his role as president of the association and serving one final year as past president. But we know that that doesn't happen all by itself. It happens with the encouragement and the support of a school district and a leader, in terms of a superintendent understands the value of serving the profession. We know Mark probably didn't miss a beat in regard to his work here, but he certainly added so much value to what we needed as leadership at the Illinois Association of School Business Officials. And so, in order to honor Mark and to thank you, we have a contribution to make this evening. To do that is our current president, Nelson Gray. He's the Assistant Superintendent for Business at District 62 in Des Plaines.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Gray, before you start, can I just say, just in honor of Mark?
I truly believe in the service leader model, and Mark represented that. And my personal thanks for helping me become a better leader and give guidance and direction. Our organization is better because we have peers that take leadership roles and provide services to the association, and Mark exemplified that. So, we would have brought the big check, but it's not a million dollars, but on behalf of Mark's ability to select some sort of organization, the District 99 Foundation will receive a check for $2,500 from the association. Mark will say he did indentured service. This is the compensation for it. So, Mark, thank you again, and truly helped lead our organization.
I'm going to ask Terry, who's the board liaison to the foundation. Terry? There's photo op, I guess, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, there we go. Get a close for us.
Thank you. Have a great meeting.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a great meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, it's going to be pretty tough to be that, so we have certification.
Dr. Kupka, as the board is aware, South High was awarded RAMP certification last year for the Counseling Department or Counseling and Student Support Services Department. As I understand, this is a very rigorous designation. It exemplifies the highest level of counseling services in high school. Very proud of South High School for this achievement. And tonight, Amy and Vince are going to give us detail about that.
Well, hopefully not too much detail. As you may remember, Amy Klug and Terry Tysman, both school counselors at South High School, came to the board and presented to you what the process was for the RAMP certification. And I believe at that evening, you also signed our application, which was submitted in October of 2013. In January of 2014, we found out on a first try that we were recognized, recognized as a RAMP school at the national level. Many schools get a try again and get to submit again in April. So, we were, I was surprised. I mean, I thought we had a great application, but we were pleasantly surprised that we were accepted on the first go-around. And as a result of that, this summer, at the ASCA, American School Counsel Association National Convention in Orlando, Florida, we were presented with our plaque. And I attended that convention and had a wonderful banquet. Oh, my gosh, it was just lovely. And we received our plaque. So, last year, when we came, I didn't, but Amy and Terry did, Julie, I believe it was you that said, "Well, be sure to come back and let us know how it all works out." So, I asked Dr. McDonald for his permission to come back and let you know how it all worked out. So, I'll just bring the plaque over here, and I'll share a few things up here, up on the slide. This is our plaque and the program from there.
Beautiful.
We're waiting to have it framed until I came to the board. Just to give you a context about this award, so I put some stats up there from the ASCA program this year. Seventy-two schools were recognized nationally at the convention. Fifty-two schools for the first time. So, this is elementary, middle school, junior high, and high schools from across the country. Thirty-five were high schools, so just about half. And seven schools from Illinois. And this, I'm very excited about. Some of you know that I work on a state level with school counselors, and Illinois has just started the RAMP process and getting schools excited about the RAMP process. This has mostly been an initiative in Georgia, in Florida, Texas, California, and Illinois was a bright star at the convention this year, so I'm very excited about that. And then, we will reramp. That's the next process. That's in October of 2017. To start that process, we're getting ready to release our next needs assessment this week after open house, and that helps us identify perspectives from students and parents about South High School, especially counseling services and what we're doing with students, to make sure that we're addressing gaps that we have in the interventions that we provide for students. Tonight, Amy Klug, who was here last year, one of our star school counselors, I'm very fortunate to work with 11 great school counselors at South High School, and they were all a part of this process. Amy will be embarrassed by me saying about this, but she was the one that brought us across the finish line on this process. There always has to be one that says, "Yep, we're going to get there," and Amy was that person. So, I've asked Amy just to highlight a few of the things that are going on as a result of this process and what we anticipate to see in the future.
So, when I started thinking about the things that you might want to know about what this means, you know, what does this mean for our school? What does this mean for our district? I started jotting down some ideas. And the first thing that comes to mind is that school counseling has changed considerably over the last several years. There is more of an expectation of working directly with students, more of an expectation in reaching out and providing quality programming. And so, RAMP helps us to frame that in such a way, to provide the evidence to show that this is what we're doing. It's clearly an excellent recognition for our school and our district. It's out there now, you know, in publicized places that we're a RAMP-certified school. We are providing evidence of quality, comprehensive developmental programming, a process that's ongoing, because we have to, like Vince said, reramp every three years. So, we can't just sit now and say, "Okay, we did it." We have to continue to find ways to collect data, analyze what we're doing, and determine if we need to add or change anything, and continue growing with the times. It's evidence that counselors are working diligently, daily, and directly with students. There's probably not a single day that any of our counselors just sits and doesn't have a student, you know, to work with. We have multiple students that we're working with hands-on at all times, and that's either individual or in small groups or classrooms, many different ways. Our job is unique in many ways. We're not ancillary to the process, not just there to support the school, but also to support each student from the beginning of their high school career to the end of it, so that they can find success within the school and then fulfillment in their lives beyond. And our unique role also, our role is also unique because we're some of the only staff members that will really follow a student for four years. Now, sometimes, you know, there are bumps in that and changes take place, but generally speaking, we will have a student for four years, whereas a lot of other staff members, you know, they have them for a shorter period of time. So, it's really important that we are providing quality programming so that we're really helping them develop over time and find what they would like to do with their lives. So, some of the things that have come out of this, I think we may have mentioned before, a new initiative was our Parent Advisory Council. And so, we're looking now to get that going again, once we have our needs assessment completed and we have some interested parties that want to participate in that. And that was actually not just parents, it's also students. And so, we want to reach out and get some students involved in that as well. And we try to have a teacher representative also, because we want multiple perspectives to look at the programming that we're providing and help us make it better all the time. We had an initiative to increase the numbers of African-American students in AP and Honors classes. And so, we're continuing to look at that and how successful was that initiative, and also, where do we take it from there? So, that's some of the things that I can think of right now that have come out of us doing this, this process, that we're really, really proud of. And we were kind of surprised that we got it at first, not because we didn't know we were doing all the right things as a program, but because there's those little pieces of how to analyze data and, you know, little intricacies that we were hopeful that we were doing it right, I guess, and we weren't going to get it back saying that we did it incorrectly. So, we were pleased that it came across well when they read it.
Thank you, Amy. I've worked in Student Support Services in this district now. This is my 17th year, and I've always been humbled by the support that the school board has for Student Support Services and Counseling Services at both high schools. We're very unique in the services we're able to provide, both in counseling, with our social workers, psychologists, our student assistance program. And I just really want to say thank you for your continued support of us being able to be the best we can be in the services we provide to students and families.
Thank you.
And so, you know why I love to come to school every day, when I have people like this to work with.
And we've got the kids that we have to work for.
Yeah, thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and go first, because I'm going to have to do two tests. But I would first of all like to thank you, because although you say you appreciate your 11 counselors for getting through this, we appreciate you every day. But I think this is no small feat. I mean, going for certification is certainly as a professional, something that is something to be aspired to. It is not easy. I'm sure that 20-pound plaque, you know, is a result of hundreds, if not thousands, of hours of work by many dedicated people. And it really shows your desire to improve your own practice and your ability to take a really hard look at your own practice to make those improvements. And I, for one, can't thank you enough. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, I'll let other... Okay, well, I'm going to do it again.
Dr. Kupka, I would like to acknowledge that both Ms. Klug and Mr. Rock are in the final stages of doctoral programs. I think that's just another indication of the quality of people we have in these roles.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And I think also, one of the points I wanted to make is, there's a reason we're among the best schools in Illinois, among the nations.
That's right.
And it's work like yours that keeps us up there. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
So, come back again in, what is it, October of 2017?
Yeah, you have to sign our application again, yes.
Oh, January.
We'll ask you to sign it again, I should say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, the evening just keeps getting better.
Yeah.
Communications report?
Okay, Dr. Kupka, this is sort of a multifaceted report. We're going to talk about several different things. Most of this, or all of it, is directly connected to Mrs. Browning's work, although she's had help on some of these things. So, she's going to be the presenter. But I, and I'm not sure which order she's going to approach these things in, but we are going to address the communication survey that we committed to do and the results. We're going to talk about the Intranet, which is something we've, I think we're starting today, or started very recently.
Started on Friday.
Yep.
And then, we're going to talk about some sort of low-tech things like pictures and artwork that's around ASC.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you very much. This is sort of a three-in-one presentation, and we'll see how this... I did not do that, but it's pretty fancy how it's falling there. So, want to review, we had a survey back in June of 2014, so I want to update you on the insights that we've learned from that survey, also update you about our staff Intranet, which we're calling Inside 99, which just launched last week. And then, yes, just some little bit of changes that we have around the ASC office. The communication survey, this is, I don't know what happened here, but that's funny. It was a 10-question survey. We paired it from 20 questions in 20, or 2012 to 10 questions in 2014. So, and that, I don't know if that's a direct correlation, but we had a response rate of 65% higher. So, maybe that helped to influence it. But lots of people responded to this survey, so we were really excited about that response rate. And it was represented by all different perspectives. We have parents, students, staff members, not that many community members, so we can look to improve that the next time we do this. But again, able to give us really broad insight into what people are thinking. And it was also exciting, too, to see that people took the time to do this, that they care about our schools, and that they want to help us learn how we can do things better. And there were some grandparents there, too. We learned this from our last survey, too, but again reinforced that District 99 is a primary source of information for families. It's not the Chicago Tribune, it's not other factors, but it's the people, it's our messages to the people. So, our websites are critical, our newsletters continue to be the primary source for people for their news about us. So, that's a big responsibility, I think, making sure that we're timely and thorough with all of the information that we provide. So, they're less rely on others as we would think. The content that they need and what they say is the calendar, the student and school news, and the school events. And these are all things that we naturally do on our websites and our newsletters, so it kind of matches what they need is what we provide to them. Social media, again, it's not, like last time, social media is not a huge source of importance for people, but it is telling that last time, almost 14%, or this time, excuse me, 14% used Facebook, whereas 5% two years ago only used it. And then, that Twitter, only 1% last time said that that was an important source. Now, 13% are using Twitter. So, that's really wrong.
Right.
And we talk about this frequently. We ask the people if they have attended a District 99 open house. We've, you know, progressed from bagels with the board to now our open houses and asking people how that is going. And people do say that they appreciate the gesture and they like that we're there. like that we're there, but at the same time, they would probably want to evolve it to a more meaningful session, so that's one thing that's on the to-do list for this year. We're going to begin to make the open houses more interactive, starting with this master facility plan. So, we've gone through this process, and we're just in the planning stages now, but I think in early December, we will have some evening events open to the public, inviting them to give us feedback about the facility, so that will be a good practice for us for how to structure community engagement sessions in the future. Also, people volunteered, about 30 people, but 18 people have responded, and we're just trying to schedule them right now for a community advisory committee. So, similar to the South High counselors, we're getting a mix of people, students, staff, board members, I think, offered to help that, and looking to meet maybe three times this year, just for more detailed help for what we offer and just ideas, because there, lots of ideas came through this, and lots of comments from people. Somebody said, "Let's have a teacher feature for the newsletter," so make that more in-depth of who are our teachers. So, I thought that was a great idea, so lots of ideas. And probably my favorite quote from this survey was, somebody said, "I feel like I'm informed of important information when I need to be, but you don't flood my inbox." Thank you. So, that to me is kind of the boy who cried wolf. We're just, just the facts, but, you know, try to keep in constant touch with people. So, that's kind of an overview about the survey. I don't know if anybody has any questions about it, but I'll send details in a memo, too, if you'd like to read all the comments. It's kind of, it's kind of fun. But it was mostly positive, I would say, very positive about our communications. Now, I'd like to just talk about the Intranet, which is a website for internal staff only, and you will all be receiving credentials to go in there as well, so you can read the content and explore the site for yourself. But it seeks to kind of have just an overall cover and to all of the website information that we have. I mean, we just have desperate, disparate pockets of information, and the Intranet, the mission is to just put it all in one place and make it simple, make it a destination for our staff, so that they can read the news, internal news, and just make it more efficient, because a lot of times, there's duplication of effort that I don't think that we even realize, the forms that the schools have. So, putting them in one place will make it more intuitive, I think. So, this launched on Friday, so this is what you will see when I send you an email, and you can log in for yourself, I'll send you the URL, but then you log in, and then you'll have a website that mirrors kind of our external sites, too, which makes it, as you know, Rod, he's not here right now, but he married Kim Dryer this summer, so I don't know if you all knew this, but probably they did. But this is, you know, to not only have those professional connections, but personal ones as well. I mean, we all work in different buildings, so sometimes it's hard to keep up with the news of what's been happening with people, so trying to make it a fun place to go. But up at the top, you can see our kind of ASC-like services, so trying to make our functions more user-friendly for people, and so that they can find the things that they need. Been working with Pete's office for what's, to put up all the HR forms, and with Gina's office for the student learning, so really just transferring all the content that's currently on a different-site blackboard into this more user-friendly few of it. This is the HR page, so you can see all the forms that people will be able to click into. We also know that Mark has had his blog for a few years now, and now it is a blog, so we'll be able to, I know. So, we'll be able to put some pictures.
He's always wanted a blog, so now he has a blog.
But we have learned from our internal surveys that people do appreciate the on-your-mark and learning about content, but they also want content from the schools. So, now Ed has his own DG S Blog Ed Thoughts, and so, you can see that he's incorporated some pictures from the time capsule that they put into the wall, the new alumni wall that's coming. And Scott as well, payday ponderings over there, so he'll have some space to update his staff, so.
Oh, Lord.
And that was the Intranet, so. And then, just my last piece, I don't know if you've walked around the building, but we freshened up our environment a little bit. We asked the ASC staff to help decorate. We brought in yearbooks from all different years from both schools, and asked people to put a sticky note on their favorite two or so, and then we made prints, you know, and the yearbooks themselves, there's so much artwork just inherent in them, and of course, we appreciated the student artwork. Some of it was a little dark sometimes, but, but this also gives us a connection, too, to the schools and to the students, because it's so wonderful to hear the students come in here, and we don't hear that a lot, so at least we'll see that and through the years, and it's a conversation starter as well, so it's fun to hear the people, and I think that some of the cafeteria ladies might still work here, but anyway.
Yay, for their dedication, yes.
So, that's just kind of it in a nutshell, just what's going on in communications, so I don't know if anybody has any questions about the survey or the Intranet, and I will give you those credentials so that you can go in. I didn't want to go live and spend time with that, but there's a ton of content, so we're excited to have that grow and just have it be a resource. It's another piece of our infrastructure that we need for our communications program, so.
I like the pictures, I think they're really neat. Are we gonna rotate more, or?
Yeah, so North, I know, we ordered some for North, for their cafeteria as well, so we can go on a swapping program and kind of change our view, because they're held up there with Velcro.
Cool. Clever. It's nice to see the hairstyles have changed considerably.
They have.
And the clothes. And I noticed the 65, the one in the picture, so we're all set to get into that anniversary? Yeah.
Yep, that's probably the North one, but yes, a lot of plans are being made for that.
Colors are different, but.
And the 20, 50th anniversary community barbecue is September 26th, which is Friday, so 5:30. Inviting the community out for that, and the distinguished alumni program, so lots going on.
Lots indeed.
Will we be able to access our email and board docs through the Intranet?
Well, sure. It'd be, it's a browser, so I think it's just a link, but we could, we could put a link out there for you, definitely.
Be nice.
Make it easier. Yep.
Any other questions or comments?
Good work, Jill.
Thank you, Jill, as always.
Thank you.
No applause, we're sorry, but we like the pictures.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did have a question. And that was probably not part of the survey, but an indication of, are there more people watching the board meetings on TV, or fewer, or?
Those numbers have declined a little bit, but...
We've got to be a little more exciting, I guess.
Be more drama here, apparently.
No, we don't.
They're not, it's not declined to the point of five or six people, there's still hundreds of people that...
Correct, correct, and I can pull that up and send you a note, but from the initial rollout, I guess it has declined, but definitely still people are interested, and lots of people thanked us, thanked us in the survey as well, so. The comments are really rich, and I, they're...
I would like to see them.
Definitely will copy those for you.
Yeah. Did they mention that they would like to see a sign itself?
There were comments made about signs. There were comments made, but...
Very good. People are paying attention.
I'll pack it up, and I'll put it out on board docs so that the public can see it as well.
That would be great. Only if they go your way. Hey, it's nice to know both ways. At least people are paying attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Good idea.
Schedule of Board Business?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Cupka, and this is, I believe this is what the, was it a bucket list thing, or the?
Parking lot.
Parking lot, thank you.
It's a safer thing.
We had talked about for a number of reasons, sort of reviewing the schedule of board actions, and to try to, I mean, the goal is at least to give the board a sense of what decisions will be voted on the same night information is presented, and what decisions will require at least a meeting in between presentation of information and decision. And that's helpful to the board, but it's also helpful to the administration, so we're aware of what the board has a sense of what it wants to discuss. And we started out by looking at, we took the last three years, and we looked at all the actions over three years, and what we found was those actions fell into roughly one of four categories. There are things we do the same time every year, the same month every year. There are things we do every year in about the same time, it could be a span of two months, maybe three, but we do it every year, it's not the same month every year. There are things we do periodically throughout the year, in example, approving student tours. And we, you know, we didn't, used to do it like that, but we've come to that practice because it's often much more, from a business standpoint and a cost to the students and their family standpoint, it's much better to do it periodically than all at once, because often they can get better financial arrangements by doing it that way. And then, we have action items that don't occur every year, that come up, and that's probably been the place where we've had the most sort of concern or misunderstanding or however, in terms of when those things are scheduled. So, that, given that scenario, and I have to thank Julie, who did a lot of this work, and we went back through and we looked and at least tried to make a list of all the board actions over the past three years, and looked at them just from the perspective of, is this something that's going to require, this action typically going to require a full review, meaning discussion in a month, in order for the board to process and come back and ask questions before the final vote, or is this something that really can be expedited, meaning as much as it's important, the board needs to consider it, it really doesn't need a lot of lag time, it really, it's really straightforward, it's really, the prima facie evidence is plenty to make a decision that night. And so, what I've done, now each of you has in front of you a paper, and I'd like to go through what I see as what should be an expedited review and what should be the full review, and I'd like to use that as a basis for the conversation, because I'm, my guess is that the board may have different views than I do, and different board members, individual board members may differ on some of these issues. It's not the intent to decide tonight, but to have the discussion tonight and then ferret out the ones that we really need to discuss further. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, if I'm beginning with the first page, the following actions, DL's Board of Directors appointee, I'm presuming that's an expedited review. Downers Grove Plant Commission?
Same.
Expedited review, SACID Board of Control expedited review. Meeting calendar, that's typically an expedited review, and delete closed session minutes and verbatim recordings. Now, for the board, for this board, at this point in time, I would say that's an expedited review, but the next time there is a board, that'll require...
Maybe.
Where possible.
That always, it seems to always happen that way. So, that could go back and forth depending on the experience and the comfort of the board with that, those questions. In terms of, and I'd probably group, after I've considered this, revised school calendar and school calendar together, in fact, that is a full review, because we do present that information, at least the meeting before it's voted on.
Oh, that's right.
Revised summer school calendar, I'm presuming that can be an expedited review, and a change in the school calendar, especially emergency, emergency, yeah, emergency days adjustment, that's what we do at the very end of the school year for the, to delete those days we don't use, I'm presuming that's an expedited review. Terms of capital builds and contracts, authorization of student photography contract, typically that's going to be an expedited review. Copy paper, expedited review, custodial maintenance supplies, expedited review. Food service vendor, I think that now, we understand that should be a full review. Other contracts and bids, that could go either way, I'm going to put that...
Just depends on what it is.
I had mine on the line, too.
Yeah, it depends on what it is.
Special education transportation contract, I'm going to say that's an expedited review.
Right, because that's vetted by the...
I had, I had that actually as a, as a full review, because I thought, my, the reason I did that was because it is such a large portion of monies, and we've been through contracts before, you know, and I just thought it was something that we would definitely want to look at and talk about.
Okay.
We could, the other issue is it's already vetted by the SACID board, because it comes through SACID, they do, they do the negotiating for us.
Yeah.
But if we need to take a look at it.
I put the two of them together, though, was the transportation contract and that special education, I had them just, I had them together.
We certainly need to be aware that it's a costly item. I think the transportation contract is the one that...
Transportation contract, I have a full review.
Okay, all right, okay.
I had marked it the same way, Deb, and I also noted that, you know, we had, in the past, the special education contract had been, has been an expedited review, so, so, you know, I had some of the similar feelings, but, you know, I think Julie's got a great point, in that there's, if there's another board going through, looking at it in detail, vetting all that out.
Because it's done, it's the co-op that sets it up.
So, so...
I'm good.
We'd probably leave that an expedited review category, I would think.
I just had them together, that's all I did, it just...
So, I'm sorry, Deb, you're comfortable with that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, we're on financial. The abatement resolution for the alternative residue bonds, I think that could be both. Certainly initially was a full review.
Right.
But perhaps it does not need to be a full review every year, once, again, the board is experienced with the question, understands the process, it could be either one, certainly initially, that would be a full review.
Agreed.
In terms of the budget, and actually, the budget is a process that, in fact, begins with a tentative budget, a public hearing, and a tentative budget, and then a budget presentation, and a budget hearing, so by definition, that's a full review process.
It's a rhetorical question.
District Auditor Services, that's an expedited review. District Depositories, expedited review. Five-year financial projections, expedited review. Illinois compiled statutes, historic building taxes, that's typically a consent agenda item, so I'm presuming that's an expedited review. Intend to issue $1.525 million in funding bonds is a full review. Intergovernmental agreements, I think typically would be a full review, regardless of, in this case, the property assessment consortium, but in most cases, I would presume an intergovernmental agreement probably should be a full review. Intervention proceedings before the Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board, that came up a couple of years ago, that was, in fact, a full review. Property and liability insurance, expedited review. Student fees, full review. Summer camp fees, I think that at times, it's been full review and expedited review, but I left that in the full review. Tax levy, full review. Tax rate, that's really a perfunctory exercise after the levy's been put into place, there really isn't much discretion with that, I put that as an expedited review. Transfer of interest from working cash fund education fund, that's been an expedited review in the past. Treasurer's services, expedited review. Treasurer's surety bond, expedited review.
Right, so, before we go on, I had District Auditor Services and five-year financial projections, I was thinking that maybe they were for review, so.
Okay.
Help me, and this is, you know, I went back through meetings, minutes, and looking at when we did what, and what we did, and so, I'm just, can you help me, why would those be expedited instead of?
Can I come back to that, Mike, after I go through?
Okay, is that what we want to do?
Identify everyone's, everyone who disagrees or has a different view, then we'll go through every one.
Mark?
Yes.
I don't, I didn't hear you talk about the public hearing on the tentative budget.
Right, you missed the tentative budget.
Or the, or the tentative budget.
I'm combining that as a process, including both.
Okay, okay. It would, indeed.
Goals and plans, adoption of strategic plan, full review. District goals, full review. District improvement plan, school improvement plan, and Title I plan. I have written those as expedited review, in fact, we're not even sure we have to do those.
Right.
Right now. I'm sure they'll come up with something else, but right now, we don't have to do those.
They've always wanted some work.
Grant, they, meaning the Illinois State Board of Education. Grants, grant programs, expedited review. School library grant, expedited review. School maintenance project grant, expedited review. Grants, grant programs, expedited review. School library grant, expedited review. School maintenance project grant, expedited review. Instruction, curriculum proposals, full review. Summer school recommendations, expedited review. Textbook adoption by process, that's a full review. And the vote for textbooks to go on display, that's part of that process. That's really an expedited review.
Got it.
I was thinking about the
Personnel, administrative raises, full review. Athletic trainer contract, expedited review. Exempt staff raises, full review. Honorable reduction in teacher, tenure teacher assignment, full review. Notice of dismissal of non-tenure teachers other than final probationary teachers, full review. And that, not, those two aren't necessarily a month, but there is a meeting beforehand where those are all vetted before the board votes. Prevailing wage resolution, that's always been the consent agenda. It's an expedited review. Staffing ratio is typically, has been both, but more recently that's been an expedited review. It could go either way. The support staff contract is a full review, and that's a process that goes on for several months, as is the teacher contract.
I think you must, I didn't hear premiums for employee medical
Mm-hmm.
That's a full review. Thank you, Nancy. Miscellaneous, athletic and activities code of conduct. My experience is that's been both, a full review and expedited review. That sort of depends on the content, if there are issues. If the changes are perfunctory and not substantial, it can be an expedited review. I would say the same thing about student discipline code.
Yes.
Illinois High School Association membership, expedited review. IMRF resolution. We looked this up and this is a one-time only, so there was something to do with the IMRF system.
Right, there was something where we had, we were recommended by IMRF to make a, pass a resolution retroactive to 1988 to it's kind of grandfathered into our plan. That's how they wanted us to do it, so we did it. It's a one-time, not expecting
Well, depending on the situation, that could be the full or expedited review.
But it might happen again, is that what you're saying?
No, this, I mean Yes, it would be a totally different topic or something.
A recognition of schools, I think that's an annual perfunctory process. That's an expedited review. And the school day committee recommendation, that was a couple of years ago, from a Joint Administration Association Committee, that was a full review, but that was an, sort of an isolated situation. So I've heard in terms of further discussion, Mike, Deb has talked about special education transportation, but it's not, you're satisfied?
Oh, yeah, I had only just lumped the two of them together on transportation, so I'm fine with that, yeah.
Okay, Mike's talked about district auditor services and five-year financial projections. Does anyone else have comments or suggestions?
Well, my suggestion would be maybe some of these things that are at the expedited review, like the athletic trainer contract or something. Maybe we could just get a heads up that it's come due. So if anybody has any questions, that they can, you know, talk to the appropriate person and then, you know, so it doesn't become a problem.
I had this one too.
Right, I think we're going through them.
You know what I'm saying is, is that
As well as give it, and give it to us though, as early as possible.
Yeah, yeah, and, and so, you know
I agree, Terry.
That's my only thing is, is a lot, and that's a lot of the ones that are expedited, you know. You guys know if something's being talked about in the buildings and stuff and let us, because sometimes you're our ears on stuff like that, so that's just my comment.
Would it be fair or would it be too cumbersome to have a list at the end of, you know, how we have like the parking lot, that these things are coming up in the next meeting?
Yeah, so, you know, I'm just, I'm just saying to be aware before it shows up on our consent agenda, and then somebody's like, oh, wow, you know
We maybe get it on the Friday.
But I don't consult my calendar.
Well, we frankly
Could we just put it on the list?
It'd be at the, after the, like after the monthly business meeting, we began, we begin looking at the next month's business meeting every week. And we start with looking at the agenda from the previous year's meeting for that month.
Okay.
So we do have a sense of things that are coming up regularly. So we could provide a list of those things that are going to be
And especially if you see, oh, this might be just a little different this time, whatever, you know, whatever the issue might be.
Yeah.
Might not be quite as routine as it normally is, and then we could have that heads up that we might want to really pay attention to it.
Right.
I just, I mean, if you're planning that far in ahead, instead of us, so you've had it, you've been talking about it, instead of us receiving it on a Friday afternoon to be able to vote or to be as well knowledgeable and well-versed as we need to be, get it to us a week ahead of time. To say, I mean, I'm sure a district audit doesn't just come in your office that Friday afternoon to give it to us. So if we can have that as soon as possible, just to look, and it may just be very perfunctory, but it gives us an opportunity to study a little bit better than, well, here's the weekend and, you know, we'll see you Monday. I think that's what most of us would, I think, ask and appreciate.
And if you do have questions, that gives you opportunity to be able to contact somebody.
Right, and it's not leaving the staff to scramble on Monday afternoon. Here, I've got seven board members and they all have questions about the district audit, because we just gave it to them on Friday.
Right, right. That's, that's, that's my big concern, is that there's not enough time for staff or us to be able to answer the questions and
But if, following that train of thought, then we would anticipate, it sounds to me that we would anticipate that the entire packet be out much earlier.
And we've talked about that though. We've talked about information being more readily available to us sooner rather than later. And it doesn't mean that it's totally firmed up, but at least there's, there's a composition that we can at least study and say, what, we can understand and discern the, the direction that they're trying to go. Instead of, here it is Friday afternoon, I don't know when you look at your packet, but I tend to look at it like Saturday morning. And then by that time, you also have your, your other duties, professional and personal, and then here it is Monday. And I don't feel as well-versed as I need to be, and then I'm asking questions, or we're all asking questions, times seven, you know.
I do need to give staff their due here. We, I think we have seen that. We have seen, we have seen postings up to, to so basically building the agenda as we go, those things that you can get on, that you've been doing that, so I just want to make sure that that's recognized.
We've done that. We try to do it with the major reports.
Right.
Some routine reports, we have not. Now, we do, for example, it's always been the practice to send the agenda a week, at least a week ahead of time to the president, vice president. We often change that agenda.
Sure.
Take things off it and add things to it, but we have, we have been doing that. We could send that to the entire board. That's not a, that's not a big issue.
I think that would be helpful. I mean, when, when you have a monthly calendar of board action, just in general, yeah, here's our meeting times, but also a list of, here's usually what we'll be covering this month traditionally. This is what you can expect. And maybe something that, in addition to what we've normally been doing, here's something else that we're, to look out for and to maybe look at your board docs sooner than later. I think would be very helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So now, are we saying we'd prefer to have it just like coming up next month on our board doc? Or are we saying we're going to distribute the minutes or the tentative sket, agenda to everybody? I'm, I'm okay either way. I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing.
Just so we know where to look for that information. I think that's the big thing.
Yeah.
Is that if you decide to put it in the parking lot, at least then we all know that we look at the parking lot for the next month.
And I think what would be easier is to put it on the Friday, on the Friday memo to us.
Right.
Say, you know, we've got, whether it's the one that's going to pertain to the first workshop, here's what you can expect September,
Look ahead.
October, yeah, this is your parking lot. Instead of having to go to board docs, boom, it's right here. It's immediate. Here's where your attention needs to go.
Yeah.
I think would be very beneficial.
So we know where to look for it and
Well, we'll, we'll I will certainly work on that and see if it's, or what we do is satisfactory.
I would think trying it in the Friday memo would be the easiest, if it's, if it's workable for you.
There are some situations, and I know this is, this is more the exception. For example, the staffing stuff. Now, some of that doesn't, we're not through that to 11th hour. We, just the intricacy and the sort of the decision-making, it has to go into that.
Right.
We hold that to the 11th hour, as you know. But there are many other things that are not like that.
Right, when you look at the calendar, that's just been posted to board docs for this meeting about, here's what we do July to July. I think that would be a great starting point. And then there, if there are any ancillary topics or things that we need to go to, boom, you're right on the Friday memo, because it's not being disseminated to us as a full board. So if it's getting to the president, vice president, it's not getting to the rest of us. And just so that we all have an understanding of what we can expect.
You know, and if we need to prepare something for ourselves to look up, you know, because we do some research on our own, so that we're a little more familiar with a topic. You know, that gives us time to do it because, you know, we all have other things that we have in our lives besides this.
Okay, so you'll come back to us.
Okay, and then the two, the two questions, Mike, you had district auditor services. You're suggesting that should be a full review?
I wasn't, yes, I'm suggesting that only based on my, my quick review of this. You know, I did go back and look at meetings, just trying to get some feel for it, so I, but I'm, I want to hear more about why you put it in the expedited category and, and, you know, convince me otherwise.
Don't, don't we have a
Usually, Mark, Mark has usually sent us things on the auditor, then we talked about it that night, and then we usually have voted on it. And I think I was one that asked a lot of questions about that because we've been using the same monitor for a while, and you answered the questions that evening. I remember, I mean, to my satisfaction, I mean, then we ended up voting on it, so I would, I mean, consider that expedited because you had time to
Sure.
to read it, and he gave a very nice report and then answered, you know, questions that evening, unless we were automatically thinking
Yeah, this is something, it's not an annual thing.
No, it's not.
It's, we
When the contract expires.
Right.
You, because you raise a good question. There's some, some of these contracts are multi-year contracts, and so I would maybe make, suggest a adding another line to a couple of those that are just renewals of a five-year agreement. And then I think the bigger issues are going to come up when there's a, when we are going out to bid on a big haul change for transportation or anything that's, the auditors on a five-year rotation, we're going to go out there. So it would be, give you more time to, because there's a possibility of a change in vendor. I think that's a bigger issue.
That's it.
And so that would be something that, and certainly when we're going out to bid in a formal bid, we would know the month before because we're putting it in publication. So we could give you a heads up that this is going out for bid, and just so it's just a little more information that you would have just to be in, you know, tuned in to what's going on with, with us in the, in the building. Because that's something we, we do know easily, several months in advance, that it's coming up this year
Right.
internally. But then we would know at least a month in advance to be able to just, this is, these are the bids that are going out. These are the issues where we're seeing kind of a short informational, maybe in a month before meeting or workshop setting to be able to say, just let you know what's going on with it.
Yeah, I think if we, if we, if we categorized this instead of full review, expedited review, if we'd said, you know, a three-day review or three-week review, I mean, that's, you know, you know
Or his suggestion that for multi-year contracts, it's quite different.
Yeah, and it may not be a bad thing to do, especially for the multi-year contracts, you forget about it. You know, if you've got a three-year contract coming up, you know, it might not be a bad thing at the beginning of the school year, go, this year, we've got to review the food service contract, the bus contract.
The ones that are coming due.
And, and this is when they are, and they're due
It would help a lot.
You know, January, February, and March, you know, then we know to think about that ahead of time and give you any perspective that we have before you go to put it to bid so that, you know, when you do, those are some of the parameters that you have to work with.
Well, when I saw, when I saw that line, district auditor services, I just, I thought it implied the yearly audit that we have.
That's actually the service, the approval, we have a five-year agreement, and each year we bring back the renewal of those, those services. It's not the audit itself. The audit itself is
But was the audit somewhere else in here that I missed?
Isn't that the comprehensive annual financial
Yeah, that's a CAFR.
So that was
That's the actual
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Well, any more, any additional feedback would be great, and we'll work on refining this and changing some practices.
Actually, I had
What about that five-year financial projection?
Yeah, I was, we didn't, yeah, we didn't talk about that.
Sorry, Mike.
And then I had, I actually had a few, a few other things too that I, I didn't say anything about because I was told, wait till the very end.
No, I'm sorry. Five-year financial projections.
I was going to comment on that because I, I've always thought that we really do, I have always thought it was more of a full review.
I had it as a full review, because I thought we did
We get it and we talk about it.
Really talk about that, right.
So I'm thinking, if we're all happy with the way it's being done, that's considered a full review, would you say? Or would you, would we need more, is what?
It's usually part of the process. If you don't mind, Mark, I'll jump in.
Go ahead.
I mean, it's, it's, it does set up the expectations for the next year. I mean, if we're going to have our presentation, I'll have it with this, this month. It's not necessarily an action item. It's more of an informational item for letting you see where the district is headed. Because in the next five or six months, we'll be making a lot of decisions. The staffing recommendation will come from that. If, if there's a decision that the board says, no, we don't like the way that the ship is headed, that would change what we do. So it's really just us, I think it's a jumping off point for, for our, for starting the next year's process. So in itself, it doesn't need to be two months, I don't think, but I think it opens up, and then the following month we could have, or at any point, you know, but it
Yeah.
At some point, we need to say, okay, if it's, you know, we're in March, April, it's too late to make any kind of staffing decision. It's too late to make some
Oh, right.
changes, but for us, it's kind of an informational guideline for us. We, we know this is where we, the expectation is from our side, that next year's budget, I usually hone in on the next year when I do that presentation, and so this will be the 15, 16 year. I'll be saying, this is what my expectation is for that year, and, and we want to bring a budget to you that very closely resembles that expectation.
If I hear what you're saying, I mean, this is almost by definition an expedited review thing, because it's, this is your, this is your first piece of information to us that then we, we end up building off of. And so with, with that in mind, I think that makes
Yeah, if you look at it that way, right.
What others, Mike?
The other thing, other, other things I had here of, under student fees, I have that under full review, and you, you did too.
Right.
But in my review, way we've done things in the past, it almost seems like that was an expedited thing, that there were, I don't know that we, we talked about it over the course of a couple of months. Can anyone else?
I think that was part of the, part of the reason we did this exercise was because
So now it's going to be
For certain issues, people felt they didn't have enough time to review.
Okay.
The idea was now to move the calendar back so that if you know you have a you don't, you don't, you don't answer in March, then we need to hear about it in January.
And I think your recommendations basically are based on sort of what you've been hearing from us over the last, right? So where maybe something might have been an expedited review, which is why he's saying it's in the full review now, based on feedback that we've given him.
Super.
Thanks.
But if we're, if we're happy with what, the information that's given, I think, and we say, you know what, we really don't need to discuss this anymore? Or if somebody says, you know, I think we're ready to call a vote, we can always do that too.
Under personnel, this is just, this is just me, but when we talk about the two items, administrative raises and exempt staff raises, I, I prefer we talk about salaries there instead of raises because it's just a, I don't mean to be nitpicky, but
It's fine.
nothing's presumed. And then athletic trainer contract, we talked about that, so that's good. And staffing ratio, we have that, that's under full review now. Has it always been that way?
Yes.
Yes.
We've usually had
Well, actually, no, I have it under
Well, you had it either or.
I had it either or.
Right.
Okay.
But we have a whole workshop on it.
That's why I, as I discovered some things that were, I would classify as expedited, so
Well, typically, but not not always. There has, the staffing ratio's been an expedited review. It's been a full review when there's been a change in it.
Oh, that's true.
I would prefer that it be a full review all the time.
I agree.
I guess is the point I wanted to make with that.
The
And it doesn't mean that we're going to take more time on it. This is just a matter of, we're getting, I mean, even if it's just a, just a, just a five-second, here's what, here's what it is, and this is what we're going to be looking at the next meeting.
Why, let's just say for sake of argument that we, we passed a, a ratio that we weren't a ratio that we weren't really happy about. Maybe we were in leaner times or whatever. Okay, it was, and we weren't really great. And then the next year, it's just, it's the same, and we just expedite that through because nothing has changed. But we weren't happy with it the first time, so what can we do that we were going to make it different this time? So I like the idea of going into it with a full review. And then again, if we say, you know what, we're good, we're good with this, let's just, we'll roll with it. But I think it's good for you and your administrative staff to come in with the expectation that we would like a full review on.
The issue would only be that we would have to have the discussion in December. Because we really need that ratio in January to give our building administrators guidance about how to staff the building.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not suggesting we necessarily have.
Do you have that information in December? Do you have that information in December?
We haven't typically, but I certainly, if we had to get it, we could.
Well, you know, I'm going to throw this out there. It's a key part of the projection. And so the projection will tell you what our expected ratio is going forward for the next five years, this year, and then four more beyond it. So I think that would be the first piece of the signal because that is a key part of the projection. And so if it was, and actually, there's a couple of things we're talking about this year that will probably be more full-blown because we have a lot of curves coming at us this next year. I'll give you that little hint. But, so there'll be some things that we.
Thanks a lot.
There's some things that next Monday night, we'll be wanting to talk about, probably over a couple of meetings even.
Okay.
But back to the staffing ratio, we assume 21.8 is our staffing ratio. Now, the thing that's difficult is there's sometimes very small fine-tuning things that we do that we would bring to the board, and generally, that's going to have to be expedited. But if there's a key change in that 21.8, we would want to know as soon as, as soon as you have that inkling that this isn't working for us, so.
I think there's two questions there. The first one is, here is a projected ratio that the administration has deemed appropriate and viable in January moving forward. I think our issue is when we actually have our staffing meetings in the buildings and that we've come back and say, like, we've had this projection, here's where it now. We want, I think, if I could speak for the board, we want that conversation to say, all right, you've done all your projections, you've had staffings, you've had, you know, your projections on actual enrollment. Where are we at now with a hard number that we need to discuss? The hard number based on all the evidence that's been compiled. I think that's where we would come from because we have to make that lasting decision. We don't necessarily, in my opinion, need to debate the initial starting point, but we do, moving forward, the final number and how we arrived at that number.
So you're saying that maybe that would be by February, which I think we've done in the past, and a firmer number?
February, January.
We need, we need to have, this is a time-sensitive issue.
Right.
Right.
That, we need that information, we really need the information in January. We.
You're talking about the initial number, the initial ratio number.
Correct, right.
But you don't necessarily need our input on that because that's mostly, this is where we've been, this is where we think, because you don't know.
Well, it's a budget.
I mean, you don't know definitively if that number is going to land on that target. It's just a target.
Well, we know, we know.
Well, it's a budget.
With a certain amount, with a certain degree of certainty. I mean, the, no, I mean, the, where we would deviate from that would be if we had 100 more students enroll at one of our schools in August. And that would create a situation for us that we would either have class sizes in the low 30s in several courses, or we would add a section or two sections in order to make those class sizes more equivalent and to other courses in the school and so forth. We, but, so we would, that would be a very late in the game.
You've done that.
Pardon me?
You've done that, yeah.
Sometimes we don't have to do that, but we have done that. The issue though is, to have the staffing ratio in January allows us to do the planning work in terms of who, which staff members we're going to retain, who we need to hire, and who we don't need to retain, so we can make those personal decisions. And the board can make those personal decisions by, you know, mid-March. That's the rub about getting the information in January. Now, you're right, Keith, in terms of the exact staffing for both schools, we could change that in August. We have done that in the past, or first week of September. But it's, these are nominal changes, one or two sections that.
So that, in your opinion, notwithstanding the August, you know, we have a surprise. When it's, when you recommend a ratio to us and you've actually had your staffing, has there been any major changes or anything like that in between those two numbers?
Typically, there is not.
So then, if that's, you're saying then the importance then is on that first number, then we should probably have as much leeway as, you know, that month's time to look at it and understanding the rationale that you're bringing to us, that if those numbers don't change, unless there's something unforeseen in August.
Okay.
Well, yeah, but that number's usually not only previous, but budget driven, you know.
Correct.
And we know how the budget is going along and.
Well, when we've altered it upward, we have, that's been a budget issue. Something we've known by the fall that was likely going to be a change next school year.
Yeah.
I want to ask an obvious question. What do we consider a timeline for a full review? Are we talking about a two-month lead time or a one-month lead time or?
We, I have operationalized it as a month.
One month, so.
There's some things that are multiple months, but typically a month.
I wasn't really seeing it that way. Honestly, I was seeing, for instance, when we have a workshop like we do tonight, and then we have a business meeting, you know, next, this coming Monday. You know, I mean, with some of these things, you're just getting it the week before for the workshop before would have been, would be sufficient for me. Call that a full review. That's why I almost wanted to say, is it three days or three weeks? Because it's.
We could also call, we could also call it a month or a meeting.
Right.
One meeting in advance. But there are different, some things require a month.
And I would also say that just because we call something a full review, doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to have a discussion about it maybe at the meeting before. But rather, so for instance, we take the staffing ratio issue. If in December, you were able to tell us, you know, here's what we're looking at.
Approximate number.
Then, you know, then we can keep on the same track we're on right now. We have, we still have the, we have the meeting and the decision in January when you need it.
I think that's going to be a judgment call, you know, if it's something that's complex or.
Certainly.
Then maybe, or it might be just be for your information. This is coming up, and if you have any questions before the vote on.
I think the heads up here is that we'd like to, we'd like to know a little more before we have that meeting in January, as opposed to the way we've been operating. And that's the purpose of this whole exercise, right?
Correct.
Yeah. I think especially if there's a change in it. If it's kind of the same thing, you know, we've had the same staffing ratio now for the last couple of years. I mean, if we have a drastic change in it, that's when you really need to have a little time to digest it versus if it's the same thing, I'm not so sure we need.
Well, something like this though, even a small change ends, can have a major impact on the budget, yes?
Yeah.
So, so I, so I'm not, you asked, I've stated my case, so I'm not going to belabor the point.
As far as the staffing goes, I have no problem giving information to you in December.
Okay.
I would remind you that the last, well, last year for sure, one of the things that we did after we had the ratio initially approved, when we got closer to the actual division of the staffing, we took the look at our current enrollment compared to what Casar da said, and we reconfigured between the two buildings.
I remember.
So that wasn't something that you had like a month's review on. We just operated within the 21.8 and readjusted how much was being appropriated to each of the buildings based on our actual enrollment versus the Casar da projection. I can easily put the information together for you in December to consider that we've typically done in January, and then you could have longer to.
Think about it.
Think about it. But a part of this, I think, does go back to, Mark's going to put together his financial projections that you're going to start taking a look at based on that current ratio. And so there'll be some time between when he first presents it to you and when I would pull information together in December, that you'll already have an opportunity to provide some feedback on, you know, is, are we kind of okay where we are, or should we be looking to do this differently?
That makes sense.
Okay.
Do we have what we need?
So far.
Okay. Well, this was no small feat, so thank you very much.
Yes, and thank you to Julie.
And to this, and thank you very much. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
This is our opportunity for a reception of visitors. This is an opportunity for audience members to address the board on any topic pertaining to Community High School District 99. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. To provide all visitors an equal opportunity to address the board, please come to the microphone.
Hi, how do you do?
And state your full name and address.
My name is Bill Thompson, 10 Blue Jay Court, Woodbridge, Illinois.
Okay, and just realize, Mr. Thompson, that the proceedings are being taped.
Yes.
Okay.
Fully aware. Thank you, Dr. Cooper, for that reminder. Thank you, board members. Thank you, Dr. McDonald. Like to thank you for your tireless efforts here. I'm quite impressed with everything you guys have done here. I apologize for coming late. I thought the meeting started at 7:30. I'm on a board too, and we start at 7:30, and I just assumed that. And when I came in, I realized I was right in the middle of it. And so, so I apologize for that. Also like to thank Jill and Mark for returning the call to me. I know that I spoke to you, and I don't want to belabor this, and you may have already brought this up about the school lunch program and the missing money. Was that discussed previously here or?
No.
No, okay.
I haven't been communicating.
Yeah, one of the things, I spoke to Jill, correct? I think that was you.
I don't recall.
Last week. My daughter's lunch account, before school started, I went on, checked out the balance from last year and everything, and I had like $17.25. Two days after school started, I get an email saying zero. And I'm like, wait, there's no way, not in two days. And, you know, I did the automatic replenish thing, and nothing happened the next day. So I did it manually myself and saw $50 balance. That night, I saw $100 balance, now it's back to 50. Long story short, the money that was in her lunch account prior to school beginning for the year is, just disappeared. And it's, I'm sure I'm not the only parent, I might be one of the few who have noticed it, but, you know, I'm kind of like an old boy scout. I went online and checked ahead of time to make sure she had it in case she forgot her lunch and all that stuff and everything. She generally takes them. Just trying to get an answer to what happened to that. I know I was directed by, I don't know if it was by the school or by someone at the administration, I know, to talk to someone in the lunchroom. So I left a message, did that again, and I didn't hear anything. And followed up with an email that same day after two days of waiting to hear something. That's when I spoke to Jill and Mark, and they said, we do have an issue, it's a software issue, but as we stand here today, there's still been no answer as to what happened to that money. And like I said, it's not a matter of a lot of money in my particular case, it's just a matter of where did it go?
Sure.
And when's someone going to communicate to me about that? Never, I finally did hear from Joel Arnt, who's the person, I guess, that's supposed to deal with this issue. She finally emailed me on Labor Day and said, we're having issues and we're working on it. And it was a week ago, and I still know nothing more since then. And I just don't think it's my responsibility to keep following up with her or anyone else. I just think that that should fall in someone's, I don't know, I'm in the private sector, and someone calls me, I return my calls or I respond to an email. I'm just kind of disappointed in that, to be honest with you. On another avenue, we've been having some hiccups. I know we had a lot last year with the Westway. I won't go into that. And, you know, the bus, we just had a blast last night where we would call it the voicemail on the bus routes. And it said, the bus routes are starting tomorrow in an earlier time. They started last Friday in an earlier time, actually. So my daughter said, a lot of the kids missed the school dad, or missed the bus to school because it came early again. So I'm not sure why there's always seems to be a communication breakdown there. As I told Mark, I checked with her just to verify this again before the meeting started here, that her bus pulls up, parks two blocks down, you know, and waits, and then it comes up and picks them up. In the meantime, anyone who's been outside around dusk or early morning knows that we have a mosquito issue these days. And it just seemed to me to be a little more sensible for the bus. Last year, the bus would wait right where they picked them up, would sit there and wait five, 10, he'd be five or 10 minutes early, let everyone get on the bus and take off. But I know that's something, as Mark said, that, you know, they're going to work with the bus company, try to figure out why he's waiting down the block. But, you know, my daughter's got a cold allergy, so I already get kind of antsy when I think about winter coming up and this, these kind of things going on. She broke out in hives this morning, and it wasn't even that cold. So I used to be able to kind of rescue her, but now I'm no longer self-employed, and now I'm back in the big corporate world. And 25 miles one way, and there's really nothing I can do. If something happens at that point, if she misses the bus or whatever may happen, she's not going to be at school. And to me, that worries me even more because she's, she needs to be at school every day in order for her to progress, to be honest with you. And I'm sure you want her in school too then, so. So I'm not going to belabor you anymore. That's just my concerns there. And like I said, I know these are things you guys have been working diligently on, you know, with the busing and so forth in the past, and I just hope that we're not seeing kind of a mirror image of what happened last year with Westway and everything then. Because I can't tell you how many of my daughter's friends I pick up standing out, and I mean, 20 minutes past the bus time, and they're out there in the cold, and I don't even know if the buses ever showed up on some of those routes. And when my daughter, you know, said, oh, that's so-and-so, let's go pick them up. But you can't do that if you don't know them. And that's the whole thing. And there was a lot of kids that were just standing out there on the corners. And this is when I was 15 below, so, you know. I'm an old hockey player, I don't mind cold weather, but a lot of other people don't